Okay, folks out there, Mike Cabler, we're live and recording.
Church for the sermons.
Man, I'm serious. We are recording. Yeah.
There's two guys walking into a bar.
Trump with a live mic.
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, that's, I mean, I don't think it was that damaging, but it's not helpful. Right? I mean,
Well, I'm gonna do the same thing with my calendar.
Oh, yeah.
Wait until I get it like next.
Okay, it's seven thirty, August eighteenth, gonna call the regular meeting of BZA to order. Do a roll call real quick. One green moth, Kyle Ferris, I'm here, Steve Eisenbrow.
Here.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Bill Gallagher.
Here.
Amy Richardson.
Here.
Chris Peroni. Jim Stillsmith. Okay.
My answer too.
I think we have one guest. Is there, did you get a chance to sign in? Cool. All right. With the roll call done, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So next up, we could approve our agenda with flexibility. Would they like to make a motion?
They'll move.
Second?
Second.
On favor? It's passed. Agenda is approved with flexibility. Next up would be approval of our minutes. I don't believe we have a copy of our previous minutes with us. So I think we'll have to table that until the next meeting. We have any new business?
Application for you? Is that new business?
Yep.
You got the original. Should I leave it on the desk or pass that to you guys?
Just leave it there.
I have a
Yeah, if you can do all the, the name.
Joe Place, Plan for Land, one South Harrison Street, Ashley, Ohio, four three zero zero three. Presenting an application for a substitution of a nonconforming use, which understands a variance application accordance with your code for the NEF property that we discussed a month or two ago.
Okay.
And say I come up with a proposal, but happy to discuss that in the hearing and hopefully come up with something that works good for all parties involved.
Okay. You probably know our process better than we do a little bit, so I'm sure you're
I tried, I tried to, we tried to include everything as exhibits, just so it was easier to find through the documents. So there's Exhibits A through, I think, G, just as attachments. We give a little narrative explanation upfront as far as the reason for the request. But we concluded power returning neighbors within 200 feet. I got original labels, mailer, or email receipt for the payment for the application fee. Yeah, applications in on form, we're representing Derek and Brandon F as the applicants.
So in 30 days, the trucks went from six, six a day to eight?
Uh, yeah, so the request for eight, but there's a few that, the reason why we want to provide spots up front that are for inoperable trucks that are being worked on that may or may not move for a month or two. We tried to find a discreet spot that they could be screened and not be impactful to the neighbors. So the, the main proposal is to downscale the parking area. About two thirds of it would be reverted and it would be a possibility to add it for a single family use in the future in the back lot. And we took a look at the site and found an area that would be suitable for septic back there. The end goal would be to ultimately get a home occupation approved and get away from the nonconforming use standards. That, that's the ultimate goal here. So the whole barn would be used for a home based business in the future. But for the meantime, I'd like to ask for a substitution of a nonconforming use to allow some use of that building until the house gets built.
Okay.
I don't have a timeline for the house, but I know that's their ultimate goal was to allow for the ability to build a house in the back. Try to be a better neighbor. Tried to look at as a solution oriented thing. I'm not looking for the Peace Prize or anything like that, but trying to come up with something that might work for everybody. And definitely open to suggestions and discussion through the public hearing process. I did want to put limitations on it that would work for my client and he's agreed to everything that's in the package. Got some additional research in there too about the business, businesses that have occupied this property in the past. And I included that as an attachment, including the woodworking business that got relocated next door that continued to operate until the day of sale. I got a lot to say. I'll try not to say too much. I'll save some for you for next time.
Everything in here you did is to have any action on before the next, before the hearing would come up?
No, no, there's no, no action other than scheduled in the public hearing.
We meet next.
Fifteenth September.
We were having the hearing on, in September fifteenth. Would that give you time? Time enough to get the mailings done and all the, everything is going out?
Yeah, I think, yeah, you guys send the mailings, but yeah, it definitely gave us time to prepare. Thank you.
Anybody like to make the motion, hold a hearing on September, what's it, fifteen?
Make the motion. Received application, we need to have a number to it. Number is the D's.
It was like seven? I'm not sure.
We got four, five and six.
Which application for this year?
Oh, we had four, five and six in, in May. So the administrative PO of that, remember or not? Temporarily, I'll give it HPTD A by five oh seven. Chance that might change.
For the second?
For seven thirty-five at PM on the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at the Harlem Towne Chaff Far House at sixty-two, whatever it is.
Our second.
Second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I said.
Next one? Thank you.
Yep, seven thirty-five? Yep. Thank you. Maybe other new business? Maybe old business? Maybe reports? And I think we've established our next meeting date and time.
Couple questions.
Fifteenth?
Yes. I think we should have a court reporter for that.
Yes.
It's a, we'll have to get with Ashley and there's less that she can, if you can find one.
I would. Well, I should have Corey here too.
Yeah, I just read, read that. I read the purpose of what they wanted. I think that would be yeah, it's just, you know.
Yeah.
It was a little more than I thought it would be.
Yep.
We should, uh,
Should we read this thing? This whole book?
I don't know if we need that. We get here now?
I'm on the hearing side.
They don't want to read it in the record, so.
I think we could just comment on the contents a little bit, couldn't we or not?
It means usually at this point, we go through and make sure they have everything off the checklist that should be on here.
It's the same, it's the same property owner as this that was last time, so it's not, I, I kind of
No, no, I wouldn't, I don't want to do that.
We might want to decide if you want.
Court reporter? Yeah.
Can we do that as a motion?
Little light room?
What's that? Want to do that as a motion vote on, or is everybody?
What's that?
Have the court reporter?
I think we can just ask Ashley to do that.
Good deal.
The way, problem we can have is if not one available. Let's see if that happens.
The person on Zoom that is labeled iPhone, please identify yourself.
Bob Singer.
Oh. Well, there you go. Thank you, Mr. Singer.
How'd you get that nickname?
Mister?
iPhone.
Thanks, Bob.
I'm out of my home, so.
Yeah, you got a good connection, huh? So, all right, thank you. All right. Well.
So we're going to get with Ashley, see about the getting a court reporter and see if the Delaware attorney would, would like to be present.
Mike.
And Yeah, I think they've been more than thorough in the past. And we to trust one, I would trust this one.
One thing you get with Joe is thorough. That's, that's a good thing. All right. Wow, you ready for an emotion? The final motion?
No.
Well.
I want to discuss one thing.
Well, I see, we've got more discussion.
Come on down.
Any more discussion on the NEF trucking application? No? Okay. So next order of business, new business, old business?
I wanted to look into resolution, see what section we are dealing with, so we know all, know what we can look at.
No.
No. According to them, it's twenty-four point oh three.
Yeah.
But which we do our own due diligence on that.
Which we printed that out for the last year.
Twenty-four oh one. Section twenty-four. Nonconforming uses. This is the section we will be dealing with. I'm sure I know that. Where to look? Point four oh three is the ones in nonconforming use maybe completely extended or sets of three, except for twenty. Review of the, of a proof unnecessary by various permit issued by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Board of Zoning Appeals can permit changes and extensions of nonconform uses as follows, nonconform use of less objectionable nature may be substitute for nonconforming use. Existing nonconforming use, which applies only a portion of existing structure premises, may be extended to additional portions or such structures or premises. The order, alteration, relocation, or reconstruction of a nonconforming use structure, sign, or building, provided that such will make the nonconforming use substantially more character with its surroundings and shall meet all setbacks requirements of said district. So that's kind of what you need to be reminded of. The extension of a nonconforming use, when such extension will substantially make the nonconforming use use more in character with its surroundings. Any extension shall not be more than twenty-five percent greater in size than the nonconform use that existed at the time of the passage of this same resolution. There's just basically five, five points we have to look at. There is. What number you want? On page twenty-four oh one.
Town show.
In, in our zoning resolution. And first thing says lawful use of any dwelling, building, or structure, or any land or premises as existing and lawful at the time, and the act of this zoning resolution or any amendments may be continued, although such use does not conform with the zoning resolution or future amendments. But any such nonconforming use is voluntarily discontinued for two years or more. Any future use must be in conformity with the zoning resolution and future amendments. I, I just want to see proof something's happened there the last two years.
Yeah, I do too. And to me, that's, we should stop.
We just did that, right?
No.
No, we never got the proof.
Some of that might be on record from the last meeting.
They've never provided
all the testimony that was given.
You never get no dates, times, or records or anything?
Well, that'll be part of the presentation, part of our question. So, yeah, before we get to
Yeah, I think we should stop there.
But I just, I'm making sure this, this is what we're looking at.
I haven't looked, but for maybe some of the new people, is there a chance that in the meantime, you could run the Judge Duncan points? Yeah, hand those out for next meeting. Remember the judge, the things Judge Duncan on the
The Duncan standards for?
Duncan standards for the
Yeah, that don't, that applies, nonconforming?
I don't know. There's some things in there that I thought could be in somebody's head. I would be in my head as to certain things on there, and I think everybody should at least look at.
There are a few things in there I would ask, push and sell probably.
I have them here somewhere. I can find.
I'd have them if I brought my stuff tonight.
Well, I got great pace full on, I'd say you're
But nearly they're not too far away.
I think if people had that to refer to, there's a lot of common sense.
That's good. I think that's a good suggestion.
So perhaps we find a copy of that, we can make a copy of that and stick it in our meeting minutes.
Yeah. So, well, actually, we'll be doing minutes from this and listening to this. So that's, actually, what we're looking for are the the list of where's Duncan, Duncan standards for standards for
Doing of approval for of industrial uses and variances and okay, things like that.
So I don't know the uses.
But it was, I believe it was a state Supreme Court case and and that was, yeah. That's why I didn't bring mine. I was getting too much, too much paperwork.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if you can hear me.
Yes, Mike, go ahead, please.
Uh, yeah, this is Mike Cabler. I'm online. I don't know when it would be appropriate, so the reason I was interrupting to ask the question for, I have a question as a member of the public, and I'm not sure when would be an appropriate time to ask it. Sounded like you were about to adjourn.
Yeah, we're, we're open for a new business. So if you have any questions, go ahead, please.
Oh, okay, thank you. I was just wanting to know what has been determined to have been, or has there been a determination made that there was indeed a nonconforming use happening before the zoning went into effect? And if so, what was that nonconforming use that you will be looking at for the future?
So the hearing we had last month, which we don't have the meeting minutes approved yet, so I don't want to be too specific on that. And we also had a court reporter here. So we can probably get some good meeting minutes, but that was a determination of that hearing, was it loosely now, this isn't verbatim, but, but we did find that there was a prior nonconforming use before zoning came became a, a thing here for that property. And that, that there could be a continuation of similar nonconforming use on that property that, that was conducted there before.
Can you, that, tell Mike what it was?
I'm asking, yeah, basically then, what? If that was the determination that was made, what was the nonconforming use that you have identified that may continue? That's really my question then. Since you're saying that you have established there was a nonconforming use, then what was that nonconforming use? Manufacturing in that building?
I don't know when the building came to an effect even. It was on the non, the original nonconforming list right here.
Yeah, I think we heard, we heard testimony from the prior owner that, that conducted the business there, and we heard extensive testimony from the prior owner. That he went over quite a few different activities that he conducted, business activities he conducted in that property. Some of that was research and development, some of that was small manufacturing type work. Some of that was warehousing, I would say. So again, I'm not being too specific and I don't want to, you know, put anything on the record that says, oh, this is what it was.
No, I, I'm not asking.
Out there with the meeting minutes and
What you're telling me though is then whatever is in the record from that meeting last month, there's a determination made there as to exactly what the nonconforming use is that you're dealing with. Am I correct? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, I'm not telling you exactly. Um, I'm being
Okay.
clearly not telling you exactly because I want to, to the meeting minutes come out and we have the, the transcript from the, from the meeting there to reference.
To, to answer one part of that, Mike, we, we found an original nonconforming list that was developed in November of nineteen eighty-eight, when the zoning came back in. Uh, I, Mike does, does have that list now. And Alan Garbrandt's on there at that address. It says a Coke Corporation Quality Cash and Carry CRW Service, whatever that is, but it was some kind of business there when zoning came in in nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, and he testified, you know, what things he'd done over all the years there in, in that building, so we have to go back and look at the minutes that that mean.
Yeah, I was that, at the meeting and I was confused by his testimony.
Oh, yeah, he don't feel bad.
Has it been verified that he did work up till the point that he sold?
No.
We don't know. That's, that's one of my questions.
That, that will be, I think, a future condition here to be determined.
I think I'm, I think I may have asked him that.
You, he, you offered, you asked for receipts or invoices or something, and he said it didn't happen. If I remember correctly.
Yeah.
He did do that two years prior.
Yeah, I think he gave an answer to that question directly, but without any, any paper trail.
Yeah, I don't think he had, said he had a paper trail. But we're gonna ask for those two years, which would be an example of sales, costs, and profit. It's a standard IRS Schedule C for a single proprietorship, sole proprietorship. And that would, I think that would be the determining factor. Is my
Well, but we'll get to that.
Get that during the hearing.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. I'm looking forward to getting the clarification on that once you have your hearing.
Yeah, good deal. Sorry, can be more specific, but
No, I understand. I, I'm not asking you to try to get, put something on the record that you can't document. That's what the whole purpose of that would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We have any other new business? Anyone online?
Just Bob, not just, but Bob's there and Mike. That's the collection. All right. I am, I found the Duncan factors and I'm emailing them to everybody's BZA mailbox.
Would you send mine to my private?
Yep, one, one side. Let me make sure I got, that's my BZA isn't working. When I switch back over, they didn't turn it back on. Or whatever they do.
Well, it's really not working. Oh, I just never
They sent it to yours.
Uh, thank you.
So that is, anybody else want it sent to their non-BZA mailbox?
Yeah, I do. I can give it to you.
Go ahead.
Want to know?
Yep.
Uh, C, P I E. R O, R O N I.
Yep.
Four three two oh four at Gmail.
We need to update people's
I updated them all. I gave them, last time I gave Ashley a whole new list with all the right information.
You don't get.
Chris, I will put your, that Gmail on here as well, if that's okay.
Yeah, it used to be on there.
Well, but it's not now.
Okay.
And somehow Amy got left off the list, so
That's a little special.
We're, we're closing in on it, but, but we're not there yet. So I'll add your, your email.
Later, come here.
Thank you.
She published this, it was in our folders, but that's not what I saw. She missed some stuff, like Amy. So I'll edit this.
Oh, Amy completely.
And my phone number's on there.
She doesn't exist.
Created a version of it.
Yeah.
Is that right?
No, that's one.
Looks like that, what's that for me? I make sure we got.
Oh. Yeah, we know.
That's my thing.
Okay.
I'm not BCA five anymore. Okay. Hey, Campbell. Or I'm township, I think, I don't think it's. whatever it is. I don't think it's B C A five.
Actually, if you're listening, I have our signed copy will be in my folder of our attendance record.
I'll stop by and see here to get this clear. Okay. Good try. Because I have it, I will send it to you guys before the evening, so. For some reason, the forward on here.
I'll check my B Z A. I think last month I tried to get on it and it wasn't operable. I'll check it again. So that way, when we talk to Ashley tomorrow, we can tell her. I don't think they converted it from my T W P back to this.
For four.
I know.
Alright. Motion. Motion to.
Adjourn.
Okay, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? I just have it. Meeting is adjourned at eight o'clock.